I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gals Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location, you know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry in this, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some, you know, strong investment opportunities, for sure.
Well, my name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Conservatory of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal, so I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nine to Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears, you don't put earbuds in, and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger, and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home, and there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gals Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so, you know, we've, we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location, you know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry in this, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some, you know, strong investment opportunities, for sure.
Well, my name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Conservatory of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my, my family is still in Montreal, so I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nine to Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears, you don't put earbuds in, and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger, and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater.
All right, good evening, everyone. I will call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order. Just a reminder, the town of Bridgewater is located in McMoggy, the ancestral unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq people. And we do have an addition to the agenda, which is the cautionary agreement of the province. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Councilor Thorburn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. We'll go down to announcements. There are a few proclamations here, so Emergency Preparedness Week is this week. Also, International Day Against Homophobia and Transphobia is May 17th, and Access Awareness Week is May 28th to June 3rd. All these proclamations are on the town's website and will be shared on our social media pages, so there's more information there for those. Are there any announcements from members of council who have been attending or coming up? I know Councilor Thorburn yesterday was a big day down at the Senate House.
Yes, yeah, yeah. It was Battle of Landy, the 80th anniversary. We had a great turnout there, too. You know, we are obligated as Legion members to be responsible, we always remember, and remember the past, so it was a great turnout there, a great number of people. We were pleased with the turnout.
I was really happy that it was livestreamed as well.
Yeah, Patrick was there on another purpose, and I just happened to mention, I said, "Pat, can you, I think you can livestream that." He had all the pitman there, he volunteered to do it, like he always does, so we were blessed to have Patrick there with us.
That's great. Any other...
Yes, I just want to announce that the Bridgewater Area Chamber is hosting a mayor's breakfast at the Legion this week, so Mayor Mitchell and Mayor Carolyn Bolivar Getson will be attending, so it's a breakfast. If you haven't already, you can get your tickets online at the Bridgewater Area Chamber Converse website, so, yeah, and I believe that will be livestreamed as well, so that happens Thursday morning.
Patrick's gonna need a helper, just to cover the livestreaming. Any other events coming up? All right.
Emergency Preparedness Fair is Saturday.
Oh, yes, and where's the...
Sure, yeah, Lunenburg County Remo is hosting an Emergency Preparedness Fair on Saturday in conjunction with Emergency Preparedness Week. It's taking place from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Lunenburg County Lifestyle Center. There will be all kinds of fire trucks and cool emergency equipment, and folks young and old can come and meet first responders, and I believe there will also be free hot dogs and a chance to win a generator as well. So lots of good reasons to pop by that on the weekend.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, moving through our agenda, are there any members of the public here that wish to address council on any particular matters? This is your chance. See none. Move to minutes, April 24th, council meeting. Any errors or omissions there? Yes, moved by Councilor Tanner, seconded by Councilor Caldwell. All those in favor? Motion is carried. We'll go down to planning items. Historic downtown commercial C1 zone, parking land use bylaw amendment, public hearing, second reading. I was trying to delay that as you came down to the podium.
Thank you. Did you need to open the public hearing first?
Oh, yes, sorry. Public hearing, I have my cheat sheet. So I will, I will suspend the council meeting, call the public hearing to order, and note that all the statutory requirements have been met, and now we will turn it over to staff.
Thank you. So this is a staff-initiated application. I've talked about it before. It's to remove surface parking lots from the list of uses permitted as of right on King Street within the historic downtown commercial zone, or the C1 zone, and to ensure that parking structures are compatible with the streetscape. So this wouldn't affect any of the rest of the C1 zone outside of King Street or any existing parking lots. So the C1 zone is shown on the map here in pink. It's the central commercial district, offering retail professional and service-related businesses and complementary residential. This application focuses on King Street, as I mentioned, and currently the land use bylaw permits parking lots and structures as of right in the C1 zone on the west side of King Street, but not the east side or the riverside. So parking is a necessity, and supply has, has to increase with development demand. However, too little parking could inhibit future growth, while too much can create vacant areas in town with little to no economic value. Parking is an inefficient use of land, especially in a downtown, compared to other uses, which could encourage people to stay in the area. Parking lots can create what are called dead zones between other uses, so these reduce walkability because they aren't appealing or engaging, and they don't provide a social value to an area. An excess of parking can also increase the number of vehicles in a street network, because when parking is readily available, it doesn't provide people a reason to seek out other modes of transportation. So staff reviewed policies and plans, including the municipal planning strategy, which has relevant objectives focused on improving the design and the appearance of built form, enhancing the historic downtown, and improving the pedestrian experience. So the municipal planning strategy also includes relevant policies, including those regarding minimum parking requirements in the C1 zone, encouraging compact urban form and infill development, encouraging attractive commercial development, and adhering to urban design requirements. So there are reduced parking requirements already for new developments in the C1 zone. No parking is required for commercial uses, and 0.5 parking spaces are required per dwelling or rental unit, except by development agreement when that's used as a guideline. Compact urban form, adaptive reuse, and infill development is encouraged downtown by policy, and having a large number of surface parking lots can be counterintuitive to this. So infilling parking lots with residential and commercial development can be a more effective use of land and will help create complete streets that are more dynamic and animated downtown. It also promotes the efficient use of land, road infrastructure, and services when there's higher density and infill. Vacant land could be used for commercial or community uses, and the development of these sites would help improve the appearance of the downtown's built form and increase commercial activity. Urban design requirements are referenced in policy, and parking structures, which would still be permitted, would need to adhere to those. So the downtown and waterfront master plan states that excessive parking requirements create large surface lots fronting once lively streets, eroding the vitality of otherwise coherent places. It talks about how vacant lots can be detrimental, but there's also an opportunity to repurpose them. And the plan encourages alternative modes of transportation, and states that when there's ample and cheap parking downtown, it's difficult to encourage those. It also mentions La Havre Street, which is another section of the downtown, and how it's defined by extensive parking, and that the plan encourages a more pedestrian-friendly environment downtown. So staff also looked at the draft downtown parking study. The purpose of this parking study was to determine demand for municipal on-street and off-street parking in, in an area that includes the C1 zone. The parking study is a draft, so I should note that the information provided in the report is what could be provided based on that draft study. The study area was separated into five sub-areas, and there were 727 parking spaces composed of on- and off-street parking in those areas. So the study said that the total parking supply is sufficient to meet the average and maximum parking demand. However, there's a minor supply deficit in three of the areas. Instances of parking being over 75% occupied in the five sub-areas was never more, never for more than one hour consecutively, and at those times, other sub-areas had an oversupply of parking. The study also noted that parking systems are considered effectively full when they're between 85% and 90% full, which makes finding parking in the area more difficult. So it's sometimes a perception that there is no parking available. And the study briefly looked at how future residential development may affect parking, and said that residential development, sorry, if residential development was built as currently being proposed, the peak parking demand would probably be greater than the supply. However, an increase in residential development in the area could also lower commercial demand for parking, which is not accounted for in the report. It's also uncertain what development will occur in the future. The study suggested the need to optimize the existing supply as a solution and be strategic with new parking supply. And the proposed land use bylaw amendments wouldn't preclude the proposed improvements that are suggested in the report. So a public participation meeting was scheduled for February 15th. One person registered, so we had a phone call instead, and they were overall supportive of the amendments. They just wanted to get a better understanding of them. So the proposed amendments would remove parking lots as a permitted use on King Street in the C1 zone, but they'd still be allowed in the rest of the C1 zone. There would also be a maximum height of 33 feet, or about three stories, for parking structures, new parking structures, in the entire C1 zone. Parking structures would also require a commercial use for ground floor building frontage, and that 50% of the ground floor area would need to be commercial as well, and that's in line with multi-unit residential in the C1 zone. Parking structures could not have vehicular entrances on King Street, as is already the case for carports and garages in our land use bylaw. This would restrict some properties from being able to have parking structures. However, the urban design requirements can be varied by development agreement, which would permit parking structures over approximately 5,000 square feet in gross floor area. So if there were solid rationale to permit the vehicular entrance on King Street, it could be accommodated. However, the intention behind these, these rules is to maintain an active streetscape, not remove on-street parking spaces to accommodate driveway access, and to support pedestrian safety by reducing the amount of vehicles crossing a sidewalk. The definitions section of the land use bylaw would also be amended to not permit semi-enclosed parking structures, only fully enclosed in any of the C1 zone, because they, they wouldn't follow the urban design requirements otherwise. And just to state as well, as mentioned earlier, these amendments wouldn't affect any existing parking lots in the area, it would just be moving forward. So it's recommended that town council give second and final consideration to amendments to the land use bylaw.
Any questions from members of council? Talked about this before, that's why it's second reading. And I appreciate you making it clear that this is not, because I think there was some confusion online. I saw some people post, oh, this is the town reducing parking on King Street. No, that is not the case, so the lots that are there remain in place. It's just to ensure that if we had a vacant lot, for example, on King Street, it's not turned into a parking lot, they're meant to be commercial spaces, but they could have second-story parking and things like that, right? So there's, there's the opportunity for more, but there's not going to be less. So we should be clear on that. Are there, so there's no questions from council. Are there any members of the public here that wish to speak on this topic? No? Well, then I will adjourn the public hearing and ask for a motion from council. Deputy Mayor Fager?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater give second and final consideration to the proposed amendments to the land use bylaw as contained in the appendix A of document 23-011B.
Thank you for the second reading. Councilor Tanner, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Perfect, thank you. We'll now move to our second public hearing, so I will once again pause. Counsel adjourned counsel, call the public hearing to order for 372 Aberdeen Road. This is an application for substantive amendment to development agreement, and all the statutory requirements have been met on this as well, and I will turn this over to staff as well.
Thank you. So this application was received by staff on December 19th, and as said, to substantively amend an existing development agreement at 372 Aberdeen Road. So 372 Aberdeen Road is the Bridgewater Assisted Living Facility, which is located near the edge of town on Aberdeen Road beside the Argyle Inn, and is shown here outlined in red. The subject property is approximately 4.67 acres. So just for some current context, this is the view of the existing building from the street. Currently, there are 52 bedrooms and the parking lot in the front, and it's set back a little bit from the road and down a little bit as well. So the current zoning of the property is comprehensive residential, or R3, on the zoning map of the land use bylaw, and the property is designated as comprehensive residential on the future land use map of the municipal planning strategy. The surrounding zoning and land uses are special commercial zone, the agricultural zone, single-unit residential, and two-unit residential zones, institutional, and more of the comprehensive residential across the road, and there's some nearby commercial properties, too. So the application is to expand the building and add 46 bedrooms within two phases. So on the screen is the proposed site plan of the property. The existing building is identified closer to the street. Phase one would be an addition to the back of the building, shown on the screen in gray. It would be an addition of 9,600 square feet and would contain 22 bedrooms. Phase two would be a further addition to the back in two extensions, as shown here, and these would be 8,400 square feet in total and would contain 24 bedrooms. The closest the building would get to adjacent property lines is four meters, which is above the minimum setbacks, setback requirements in the land use bylaw. So the view of the building from Aberdeen Road wouldn't change as the additions are on the back. The additions would be one story and would be a similar style to the existing building. They would look something like the elevation drawing shown here. The top elevation drawing shows what the back of the building would look like after the first phase addition, and the bottom elevation drawing shows what the back would look like after the phase two addition. So there would be those two buildings, similar to the first phase, but oriented perpendicular to it. So the comprehensive residential zone is meant to accommodate a broad range of residential uses, modest commercial uses, and institutional uses, and this proposed use is considered institutional. The town's policy includes statements which aim to minimize conflicts between land uses, support a full range of housing options, require stormwater management, and analyze infrastructure requirements. There would be little impact to adjacent properties and land uses, because the additions would be at the back, and they would be a similar style to what currently exists. An assisted living facility, as defined by the development agreement, would provide a living option for those that are independent and do not require a high level of care, but also require more support than what an apartment would offer. So in terms of infrastructure, sewage disposal would be constructed on-site instead of connecting to the town's infrastructure. Stormwater flows could not be higher than current peak flows, and the existing stormwater pond would be moved towards the rear of the property. Parking would be less than outlined in the land use bylaw, and no bicycle parking would be required. There's currently 34 vehicular parking spaces on the property, and they are underused. A public participation meeting was held on February 8th. Three members of the public attended. There were no concerns, and they were there to learn more about the development. So the current development agreement on the So the current development agreement on the property permits a senior's assisted living facility. The development that exists had to be designed in accordance with the site plan that was provided at the time, which is included in the development agreement, and the maximum square footage was a substantial matter or is a substantial matter. So since this would be changing, a substantive amendment in the form of a new development agreement is required. So the new development agreement would include a definition for the assisted living facility because there isn't that definition in the land use bylaw, and that definition is "a residential development composed of private or semi-private bedrooms with en suite bathrooms and a central kitchen and dining area from which meals are provided." The only thing that has changed from the draft that council saw for the first reading is the removal of the clause about solid waste because a shed for solid waste already exists and is located in the front parking lot over to the side, and the solid waste is regulated by the solid waste bylaw. The development agreement outlines that the height, the massing, and the exterior design of the existing building and the proposed additions shall be in reasonable accordance with the elevation drawings, which you saw, and setbacks shall be in reasonable accordance with the site plan. A maximum of 49 vehicular parking spaces would be permitted. Staff included the maximum parking from the land use bylaw in case the applicant wanted to add more in the future, even though there are currently only 34 spaces. And a paved pedestrian sidewalk would be required on the property connecting to existing walkways, and it would also connect to the new additions. The development agreement would stipulate that the additions may be serviced with on-site septic systems as per the public sewer bylaw. That doesn't permit the existing building to be just the additions because they are not within 100 meters from the street where central sewer and water is located. A downstream sanitary sewer capacity assessment was not required because they would not be adding additional sewer to the town's infrastructure. However, if the additions do not end up being serviced on-site, then an assessment would be required, as would any infrastructure improvements. Additionally, a stormwater management pond would be required. One already does exist, but would need to be moved. And although the applicant has outlined two phases for the development, phasing has not been included in the development agreement because specific timelines weren't provided and staff don't have concerns if the 46 bedrooms were constructed at once. So it's recommended that council give second and final consideration to the development agreement for 372 Aberdeen Road.
Thank you. Are there questions from council? Mr. Tanner?
McKenzie, no requirement for minimum number of parking. Why is that? I understand the current parking is underutilized.
I'm sorry, so it's a maximum of 49 vehicular parking spaces would be permitted, but yeah, there's no requirement for a minimum.
Why wouldn't we require a minimum bit of parking?
They don't intend to change the parking lot that currently exists, and it has done what it's needed to do, so there wasn't any concerns from staff about including that. And our land use bylaw usually does include minimum requirements for parking. It's something staff has been talking about a little bit more as other places tend to veer, have started to veer away from that a little bit and look at maximum parking requirements rather than a minimum. So it's something that we had included in this development agreement, just to ensure that there wasn't an oversupply of parking, but the intention is that the existing parking lot would stay as is because that's shown in the site plan, so they would have to adhere to that.
Yeah, I guess my concern is because we're adding so many units, obviously more staff, more parking requirements will be required, I would expect. I just don't think you want to end up with parking on Aberdeen, people parking on Aberdeen. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, so there's...
What are we missing here?
No, 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 nothing really, no. The reason we did it, we spoke to the applicant who is here, if he wants to speak to it after, he can, but they didn't have any concerns with the amount of parking that they already have. Like I said, they don't intend to change it, so we've worked with that, and if they're comfortable with it, we're comfortable with it.
Okay, that's right, okay. Any other questions? All right, does the applicant have a presentation or anything?
No, I'm public.
You're great, all right. That also takes care of members of the public, so I will adjourn. You see, you're going to miss this, second last meeting. I should put that under announcements. We can talk about this after. This camera can just zoom in on standing. So I will adjourn the public hearing and ask if council is prepared to make a motion. Councilor Orban?
I would move that council for the town of Bridgewater give second and final consideration to the proposed development agreement and enter into a development agreement regarding the property located at 372 Aberdeen Road in a manner similar to the draft agreement dated May the 8th, 2023, as shown in Appendix A of Document 23-105B, and that the mayor and chief executive administrators offer are hereby authorized to execute the agreement and any other required instruments only within the timeframe described in the development agreement. Should the document not be signed within the timeframe described in the development agreement, council shall consider any request to sign the development agreement as a new application and follow the entire process required by the municipal government act.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Conklin. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor? As opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Is there a 14-day appeal period for both these public hearings?
Yes, yeah, for both of them.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make note of that. Thank you, and good luck with the expansion. Very much needed, for sure. We'll go down to 6.3 neighborhood commercial C7 and special commercial C8 zone amendments, the initiation reports.
Good evening, council. I'm here this evening to talk about limited commercial designation MPS amendments and the initiation that we're looking to start. So to start off, limited commercial is 25 properties across town. The C8 zone and C7 zone are the ones we're talking about tonight. The C6 zone is also limited commercial, but we will not be talking about it tonight. Limited commercial is intended for modest commercial operations in or near largely residential areas. The limited commercial designation, as I mentioned, applies to the special commercial C8 zone as well as neighborhood commercial C7 zone. As neighborhoods become more diverse, staff are looking at if there are ways to have the commercial uses closer to the residential uses while also finding homes for some of the uses in the C8 designation. So specifically on the C8 designation special commercial, several landowners have expressed concerns with restrictive nature of the C8 zone restricting the ability to develop or sell lands. Municipal planning strategy states that when properties are no longer used as commercial, they should be rezoned. Updates to the C7 neighborhood commercial, the other zone I mentioned, may also allow for some of these C8 properties to continue as commercial where they have existing commercial uses. So specifically on the several landowners piece of the first bullet, there have been recent MPS applications for 261 New York that have led to more conversations as well with other C8 landowners about potentially changing the zone. There are also several C8 properties that no longer have commercial uses, and so we will be looking to rezon those as well in keeping with the municipal planning strategy. For those who are looking to continue their uses, we have the C7 zone available. C7 zone, we're looking at changing a little bit. The purpose of the zone is to provide limited commercial uses, designed to serve the day-to-day convenience needs of residents nearby, and it's not so much about the large commercial stores, it really is about the much smaller businesses located close to residents. Staff are looking at potentially expanding the uses in C7 and also looking at streamlining the approval process. So some of the permissions that we're looking at will be around use, some of them will be around also the approval process, if things are approved by site plan or by development agreement, with again, the aim of streamlining the zone as much as possible. So the aim of this entire process and what we're looking at starting tonight is looking at mostly the special commercial zone and looking at if it would be possible to remove all of these special commercial zones and move them into other land uses, whether it's a residential use, the C7 use, slade zone, or other zones. So we're really looking at considering that. We're not necessarily saying this is the route we're going to go, but it's definitely something we want to look at, potentially removing the C8 special commercial. We're also looking to amend the land use bylaw and municipal planning strategy around, as I mentioned, neighborhood commercial to permit more uses potentially. So this is our tentative schedule. This is a pretty large rezoning project with 25 different properties located across town, so this is tentative and subject to change. Tonight, of course, we're talking about the initiation report. We'll then be hoping to hold a public participation meeting on May 31st, first consideration on July 10th, and the public hearing possibly on August 14th. It is recommended that town council, for the town of Bridgewater, direct staff to begin the process of amending the municipal planning strategy to redesignate the C8 properties and potentially removing the C8 designation entirely. We're also going to be taking a look at creating new policy frameworks within the limited commercial designation, mostly around C7, the neighborhood commercial zone. Do you have any questions on this initiation?
Questions, council? No, I think probably our questions are going to come after some public engagement. And I appreciate the longer timeline, just because I think there's going to be some questions coming from the public and probably they'll filter back to us as well, so it's good. If no questions, someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Orban?
I would move that council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to begin the process of amending the municipal planning strategy to redesignate C8 zone properties, potentially enabling C8 policies in the municipal planning strategy and create new policy framework within the limited commercial designation.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Conklin. Further discussion? None. All those in favor? As opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. We are down to reports and recommendations. Request for use of town brand mark.
All right, good evening again, council. So the town has received a request from the Friends of the Desperse Museum Society to utilize the town of Bridgewater brand mark or logo on merchandise that they would like to make available to the public for purchase in the Desperse Museum gift shop. So as background for both council and the public, the Friends of the Desperse Museum Society has a longstanding relationship with both the museum and the town of Bridgewater dating back to 1988. The society operates with a mandate to support the programs and educational initiatives of the museum through large and small fundraisers. Now, the products that the Friends are talking about selling will be sold out of the museum gift shop, which they operate, and money raised from the sales of those products would be utilized by the Friends to specifically support museum initiatives. Currently, there is no policy relating to commercial requests for the use of the town's logo. The town does, however, have an approved brand mark guidelines document, which was approved by council when the logo was adopted in 2015, and it provides guidance and style recommendations to ensure consistency of use of that logo. So given the mandate of the Friends of the Desperse Museum to support the aims and programs and objectives of the museum itself, staff recommend that it would be appropriate for town council to grant permission to the Friends of the Desperse Museum Society to reproduce the town's logo on items made available for sale through the museum gift shop and online. As part of that permission for this particular request, staff are recommending that use of the town's logo be overseen by and permission granted at the discretion of myself, the town's manager of community attraction and communications. And further to that, given the potential for future commercial requests to occur, staff also believe that developing a policy to set out the parameters under which the town of Bridgewater would consider making its logo or brand mark available for commercial use should be worked on and brought back to council on a future date.
Any questions? All right, some...
I just wanted to comment that that's a great initiative. I hope that they're successful in doing something, have different ideas from t-shirts to mugs, I guess.
Yeah, all kinds of, you know, like standard merchandise products like that, the kind of things that you would expect to see in, you know, a visitor information center or gift shop, something like that. And I think it's fair to say that we have had requests over the years for town of Bridgewater branded clothing from the public, and we haven't been able to act on that because, you know, we're not in the business of selling clothing necessarily, but having the Friends jump in and seeing this as a fundraising opportunity for the museum is definitely, I think, a win-win for all involved.
Yes, great.
I agree, I think that's right. Great. Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Conklin?
Thank you, motion. I move that council for the town of Bridgewater grant permission to the Friends of the Desperse Museum to utilize the town of Bridgewater brand mark for the purposes of selling branded merchandise in support of fundraising efforts for Desperse Museum initiatives, and that discretion be given to the town's manager of community attraction and communications to oversee and control the use of the town's brand mark for this particular request, including approval of use on specific products. And further, that staff be directed to develop a draft policy regarding future requests for commercial use of the town's brand mark for review and consideration at a future meeting of town council.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager. All those in favor? As opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. 9.2, recommendation and appointment of resident representative to Bridgewater Active Transportation Advisory Committee. Is someone prepared to make that motion? Councilor Conklin, thank you.
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater appoint Brendan Sampson as a resident representative on the Bridgewater Active Transportation Advisory Committee for a three-year term effective immediately.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Tanner. All those in favor? As opposed, motion is carried, and thank you to Brendan for volunteering on a, pardon the pun, a very active committee, so that's great. Down 9.3, third quarter 2022, so this is what you're going to miss. But I know you're going to watch, like every council meeting. Third quarter 2022, 23 financial report. Turn it over to Director Finance.
All right, so this is, I don't often come to you with good news, but I suppose this is a somewhat good news story, that we have a projected surplus for the '22, '23 fiscal year of about $1.5 million. The information in the report is only up to December 31st, so all of the March figures are not included, but staff had projected where they thought they would be at March 31st with the information they had at the time. So one of the big drivers, about half a million dollars of that $1.5, relates to deed transfer tax, and that's been a big number for us for the past several years, coming in over budget. Right now, I think the actual for March is about $1.1 million because we have the final March number. So, and we had budgeted significantly less than that. So that's making up a lot of that surplus, just in that one item. Kind of going through the report, I'll just go over the highlights, the details there for you to review or if you have any questions. On the sales of service, which are things that are not tax revenue related, our police fees for service, that's expected to be over budget by about $250,000. And so that, while it makes up part of the $1.5, when we come to you a bit later and we have the final numbers, we'll be requesting that any surplus from police operations be transferred to the police reserve. So that $1.5 gets changed a little bit because we'll transfer things into the appropriate funds, but right now that's looking as it will be about $250,000 over budget. In the other revenue from own sources, there's a variety of things going on there. The building permits, as we've told you throughout the year, that is projected to be about $15,000 over budget overall. The designated community project funds, the revenues included in the actuals, we don't budget for it as we're never quite sure how much fundraising the community organizations will do. We ended up receiving about $140,000 of donations through that program that were then turned around and granted to those organizations. So that's over budget, but there is an offsetting expenditure of the same amount. Bank interest earned by the town, because interest rates had increased, so did the interest that we earned on our bank balances, so that's projected to be about $76,000 over Under conditional transfers or grants, right at the deadline, basically, you know, at the heels of March 31st, came a $113,000 grant from the province that can be used for transit operating or housing, and so we haven't determined what that will be used for at this time, so it will be deferred and used in '23, '24, once staff propose what that should be used for. So there's quite a few items there that are over budget, which is making our revenue look good. The same kind of story on the expenditure side, we've had some savings that's helped with that surplus for the year. A lot of them relate to projects that might not have been completed or savings from staffing in various departments. So for example, in the finance department, due to staffing, we were unable to obtain budget software, which was part of our budget. There's the same thing happening under town hall operations with the energy awareness campaign that was part of the budget for that year but didn't happen, so that was a $57,000 savings. Under police, due to staffing, there was considerable savings on salaries there, about $298,000, but the two lines below that, if you look, call-out and dispatch overtime, because of staff shortages, overtime was up, so we didn't recognize all of that savings on salaries. Similar story with fire protection. Fire inspection services were under budget. Building inspection is significantly under budget, expected to be about $126,000 under budget, as we had budgeted for... as we had budgeted for software changes and some records management work to be done that will be carried out in '23-'24. And kind of down, under environmental health services, again, savings on salaries, however, as in most of the departments, heating fuel is expected to be over budget, and we've experienced that in the fuel costs in most of the departments this year, because the prices increased so significantly during that fiscal year. Under planning, the same thing, the special planning initiatives for flood risk, development charges, and so on, that were deferred, the projects that got deferred to '23-'24 resulted in savings of about $120,000. So those are, oh, one more, under debt charges. So every year, we assume that we'll finish up projects and we will borrow for them, or we might need to temporarily borrow for them until we issue a debenture, debenture and go through that process. So we do budget for the interest we anticipate incurring, but because those projects weren't finalized, we didn't actually have to obtain that debt, so there was savings from that as well. And I know that's kind of complicated, but we do have to budget for it in case the debt's in place, but it wasn't the case, so we did have some savings for that, at least for this year. In addition to the operating, there is, at the end of the document, an update on the capital, so for the most part, it's identified whether the project's now complete, or whether that project was carried over to '23-'24, for example. We've gone over that a lot during the budget process, so we won't go through them, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? Let's see, how do you remember when you say we're over budget, but you're talking about revenue, that it's surpluses?
Right.
That's, my head over budget is always bad, but in that case it's good.
Revenue over budget is good, expenses over budget is bad.
Right. You keep telling myself that, because it was like, why are you so happy we're over budget?
We try in the written report to call it positive budget variances, and throw some of that in there.
That's great. Any other questions or comments? I know, I know you mentioned that, for the last number of years, we've really budgeted for low deed transfer, but realized quite a bit more. But I like that we budget low and receive more, because I, I was speaking to someone at the NSFM conference last week, a colleague, I won't say where that person was from, they did the, really the opposite. They assumed that their peak year that they had, I don't know if that was last year or the year before, would be their new benchmark. They did not even come close to that, and so they realized the opposite, they had quite a, quite a shortfall in many millions. So I was just, I'm glad that we're in counsel, and finance, through multiple directors of finance, have been on the same page, and just said, you know what, take the, take the number we know we can get, instead of projecting what we hope. Thank you.
Great, so, yeah, that's a definite, learning to rely on that large number could cause a problem down the road, and we're happy to come back to you at the end of the year and say we should transfer that into a reserve for a rainy day, when it does come in. There are a couple of things there, there was a one-time transaction in one of the months, which was almost $300,000, which contributed exponentially to that number. But if I look at the trend and tell you how much it was in the first month of the year, and how much it was in the last month of the year, it's dropped drastically. I think March was only $51,000, and the month before might have been even less. So it's definitely been low the past few months.
Any other questions or comments?
Brady days are coming.
Yep, just, we'll stay the course and budget properly. All right, great, thank you. We have nine point four, we have the briefing notes from last week's discussion session, so in there, and we'll talk about this in a little bit, we had the healthcare housing presentation from the Health Services Foundation of the South Shore, talked about the town flag, which has generated quite a bit of buzz online, lots of people taking the survey, though, which is good, and that survey stays up for
June 15th.
Till June 15th, so there is a survey on the town's website, you can find that on our social media pages, so please do that. I'm looking forward to that, to update the flag to what is, to line up with our brand. And then we discussed, this one received a little bit of attention, I had a few calls from media this week, consumption of alcohol in designated outdoor public areas. So before people get all excited or all upset, this is early, early, early days, and the, the next step is really just staff reaching out to alcohol and gaming to determine even the viability of this. So I just want to note that no decisions have been made, and no decisions will be made on this for quite a while, it's not, it's not a this year thing. And those are all on the website, so just a reminder to the public watching, that the entire, all the pages, all the documents that we have in our council agenda package for tonight, including what we just mentioned, is on the town's website, so you can follow along with that, and any information you need. Nine point five is strategic priorities update for the fourth quarter.
Okay, so this, this highlights for counsel, some of the activities that have occurred in the, in the last quarter of '22-'23 with respects to your strategic priorities, and also attached to the report are the quarter four reports for all departments and the activities that have occurred within each respective department itself. So just quickly, in terms of council's priorities, exit 12A, you can see in green font what's been completed. So the wetland remediation plan has been submitted, it's been approved, and the agreement executed there. And we've also prepared some briefs and had some meetings with provincial representatives with respects to funding for some of the infrastructure cost. With respects to affordable housing, in the last quarter, staff brought forward an incentives report that provided some options and, and looked for some guidance or direction with respects to counsel wishes us to pursue. And we've also brought forward a proposal from SODA with respects to Lot 102. Council's had a public information, or public meeting with respects to providing land at less than market value to a nonprofit organization for the purchase of affordable housing as well. In terms of branding and marketing, Greg's been looking at the marketing plan for residential newcomers in the business park, and you can see that there's been some drafts in the last quarter, and that'll be coming forward for implementation in the first quarter of this fiscal year. Development infrastructure charges, council recently approved a scope of work that would have us look at what our infrastructure requirements are going to be in the long range, and how we recover those costs. So it's going to do some assessments, come back with some recommendations with respects to how we can charge development appropriately to offset the infrastructure cost. And the marketing levy, we, during the last quarter, got agreement on next steps, which is to look at a regional initiative with respects to the marketing levy, in response to the recent legislation that was approved by the province that enabled municipalities to develop a bylaw to establish a marketing levy. With the next action items, Energize Bridgewater has seen the Energy Management Information Systems Contract with the Nova Scotia Community College partnership there, entered into in the last quarter, that will see us work with them in the developing of that, the procurement, the request for proposals to look at, and EMIS. And the Community Energy Investment Plan, the report was brought forward to council about how, what's the community energy investment opportunities, and what should be the next steps, so we received some direction from council on that. Asset management, we finalized during the last quarter a draft policy and a draft strategy, and the asset management working group completed training. So we'll be bringing forward the policy at the next council meeting, as well as the strategy for council's approval. Accessibility, council received some training with, for elected officials, an accessibility workshop. Investment attraction, we had the strategies and tactics developed, and with the plan reviewed, staff did their quarterly check-in with council during the last quarter. Transit feasibility, we completed that, and you received the report with respects to the needs analysis report that staff undertook. The flood risk mitigation strategy, RFP, was also on your list of priorities, and that was issued during the last quarter. The council size review, we've removed that from the priorities chart, because it's been completed, and council was, the hearing was held in the last quarter, and the application made, and council was advised that the utility review board approved that, so the council sizing is the same. And that's pretty much it for our next priorities, and then lastly, under other, was the municipal heritage incentive program. So during the last quarter, you received a report and a draft policy on a heritage grant, and approved that, and you also provided budget approval for a heritage grant itself. Attached to that is a revised strategic priorities chart, so you can see that we made one change there, to reflect some of the discussions that were held during budget deliberations, and we also took out the completed items. So we deleted the organization reviews, that was one that we had identified that required some financial resources, and given all the other priorities and pressures in this year's budget, council felt that that would be deferred to a future year. And we added, although it's not highlighted, we added the museum funding strategy. So during the budget deliberations, we discussed the town's funding of the museum, and it was identified that there is a need to have more of a long-range strategy for how, how that's provided in the future. So we'll be looking at creating a workshop for council with respects to that. And this also, this priority chart reflects all of the initiatives that council identified that in the budget that we wanted to undertake, and so it'd match to the appropriate department for implementation.
Questions or comments? It's nice to see things being checked off the list. It's nice to have a list. Okay, great, thank you for that. Nine point six is facade program applications and recommended grants. Our economic development guru is here today.
There's that word again.
Economic.
Guru. I'm not. Anyway, good evening. This funding recommendation originates, and the report originates rather with the downtown planning advisory committee, in their role administering the Town of Bridgewater facade improvement program. The recommendation of the committee for 764 King Street is that council approve the provision of a $5,000 grant under the program to Annette Visers-Craft and Mackenzie Croft for proposed building improvements to the facade, building front facade, rather, of 764 King Street, and further that they, that council approve an additional $5,000 grant under the program for building, proposed building improvements to building side facing Veterans Memorial Bridge, and that dispersment shall be conditional upon the submission of acceptable third-party receipts for all materials, equipment, and labor required to undertake and complete the proposed work. The applications are appended to the report as appendix A. There are two photographs I draw your attention to, one on page eight of the package, and one on page 18, those visually sort of demonstrate the work. The applications, if I might add, were both well-done, with lots of information, and good technical specifications around the products to be used, and budgeting, and so on. So the property, as I said, is owned by Annette Visers-Craft and Mackenzie Croft, is located at intersection of King and Victoria, and the building currently houses commercial space in the street level and residential, three residential apartments on the upper Essentially, the front, the front facade project involves a replacement of the doors, some lighting, new civic numbers, new trim detail, and, and some fresh paint. The side project involves the new windows, two, new side window, two baser windows, and continuation of the trim, the facade trim treatment, as well as new paint. I've also outlined two budgets, one for each side of the building, that, that reflect the applications that were received. I will note there were some discrepancies in that, the disposal fees and incidentals were, were included in their proposal, but not some, not part of their summary, so if you see a different number for the values, that's, that's what represents the difference that you're seeing there, is that I worked those back in, and so you have a full, a full understanding of the total cost. In terms of implications, the program, as you know, is funded with a budget of $25,000 annually. Approval of these two recommendations would, would set by $10,000, and leave $15,000 for dispersment to other applicants. In terms of our strategic plan, work plan, obviously, this is consistent with our facade improvement program, it also speaks to the built architecture aspect of the regional growth plan, inclusive growth plan, sorry. So the options would be to approve the recommendation of DPAC to provide two $5,000 grants for each, for the separate applications. Secondly, to approve only one of the recommendations. Third, to request additional information prior to making a funding decision, or fourth, to reject the recommendation.
Questions? Counsel Conklin?
Do you have an approximate value of any facade program applications which may be in the queue, or?
I have one other that is being worked up for the next meeting, which would probably be in the, in the $5,000 range in terms of a grant, so that would, looks like that would be, if we were to approve that, that would leave us with $10,000 remaining in that program for, for the year.
Counsel Conklin?
Excuse me, how much did we award, I guess this current year, or no, last?
Last fiscal year, I believe we only awarded $10,000. I think we only had two, two applications last year, so we're, $15,000 was left unspent, I believe.
Any other questions? Counsel Conklin?
Just one more. So the corner lots are eligible to double dip for the facade program. I have some reservations about that, I know that's, that's the way it works, but just wondering, council has any reservations about that as well?
We, we discussed this last council term, I thought, where we had the same, the same question, now, second guessing my thoughts. Was it that, was it two sides, or someone coming back twice for this?
Twice for the same property, I believe.
Right, that's what it was. It wasn't two facades. And we, yeah, because someone would do work, and then they'd come back going, I'm going to do something else, and apply again, I think we, we addressed that one, but maybe we haven't addressed the two sides.
Will you leave your policy right now?
It does allow.
Allows for that, yeah. Yeah, so if you're concerned about that, you'd have to give direction to change the policy, but for this application, it doesn't need that.
Yeah, I understand that for this, it's fine, but just going forward, do we need to consider changes for that, or is council comfortable with the way it is?
Yeah, I feel like Counsel Durbin raised this, and where we landed was, if we get to a point where the fund has no money in it because of projects that take $10,000 instead of $5, that we were going to revisit it, but that's, maybe I'm, I'm not.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the longer-term history of the, of whether you spent the money, and I do know the applicant requested clarification from me prior to submitting their, their application, and I did seek clarification for plan.
I know, I know we allow it, and I just, but I remember having a discussion, because this is not the first one.
No, we've had a few others, and we may move back to staff and just ask for an update of how many have had two separate applications for the same?
In the same year, for the same facade.
Yeah.
Or both, two different streets.
Right, and we can just ask for staff to provide that information for later.
Did we have that conversation?
I know we did, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, so why don't we, we'll, we'll dig up that and figure out what, when we had that discussion, where we landed, and why we landed on keeping it in the policy, and if council feels it wants to revisit it, then we certainly, we certainly can, but, you know, for right now, they're, they're within their, in their policy.
Yeah.
Other questions? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor Fager?
Yes, your worship, I'll make the motion. I move that counsel for the Town of Bridgewater approve the provision of $5,000 grant under the facade program to Ann Visers-Craft and Mackenzie Croft for proposed building improvements to the building front facade facing King Street of 764 King Street, Bridgewater, and further And further, that council approves a $5,000 grant under the facade program to Annette Visers-Craft and Mackenzie Croft for proposed building improvements to the building site facade facing Veterans Memorial Bridge of 764 King Street. And that the dispersment shall be conditional upon the submission of acceptable third party receipts for all materials, equipment and labor required to undertake and complete the proposed work.
Seconded by council Coughlin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motions carried, thank you. 9.7 Nova Scotia South Shore, Nova Scotia South Shore Climate Cohort Regional Project.
Okay, so council had agreed to participate in the South Shore Climate Cohort project.
And if you don't remember what this was, because I didn't remember, it was, we had a councillor from MODL, not wearing her MODL hat, so Casey Delong came and gave a presentation. That's what this, that's what this is, if that helps.
Yes. So this, this staff are directed to work with the partners that were participating in this climate cohort, which are the District of Luenenberg, the Town of Mahom Bay, and I believe the Town of Luenenberg. And we're planning a climate change summit that will be held in the fall of 2023, sometime within that, and we'll give you the date to that. And in addition to that, working with this climate cohort and Ames Network, we're looking at a regional project that can be completed. So funding's been obtained from FCM and I believe Infrastructure Canada to complete this work. So a group of representatives from the partnering municipalities met in early 2023 and discussed possible regional projects. A list of four were, I guess, developed or agreed to in terms of perhaps having some regional importance. And we're being asked to select one. So each municipal unit is being asked to identify one project that they would like to move forward as a regional initiative. I would suggest that perhaps council may want to rank the top one and then their second choice, because if the likelihood of all four coming up with the same one or close to it, we might not get there. So if we rank one and two, then we won't, hopefully won't have to come back if we can't come to consensus. So the regional project list, there's an advanced REMO effort. So this would look at our, do a risk assessment on some of our, we do a hazard risk vulnerability assessment, we develop mitigation plans and emergency management plans from that. And this would update that. So it would look at risks from wind damage, storm surge, wave erosion and flooding that all are impacted by climate change and assess the potential types and extensive damages. So they would update that using flood mapping, that coastal flood mapping and erosion that would come from updated data from 2023 and look at projecting that out into 2050 and 2100 and then update the emergency response plans. So we have plans in place for these risks. This is, this is just proposing that they could update that and project that out. They note some challenges with this one, of course, being that not all five communities are participating in this program and REMO involves supplying municipal units. The next is EV infrastructure. And this is looking at developing a plan for EV charging network across the region that considers travel routes, economic development, and the projection of EVs into the coming decades. So look at how we can develop that charging network. So this would involve hiring transportation planners to determine the best location for charging stations. So this would be publicly provided charging stations or where private investment could be made as well. And just basically develop that and look at the capital cost to do that and kind of the business model and how that would work. We'd partner with local businesses, gas stations, those types of things. So this was identified by all of the municipal units as something that may be considered as well. I suggest it might not be high on all of the, of the unit's list, but it was identified as something that could be considered. They do note that there's some challenges with this project as well. And so federal funding is at the question as to whether or not there could be federal funding for this type of capital in the future. It's a multi-year project and there'll be many partners involved in achieving it. Then there's public transport. So this would be looking at a regional transport option. And this would be kind of how do we build off of what the province is looking at from a provincial transit strategy? So movement of people and goods between here and the Halifax area and then how do we continue to move people in the region? Again, this wasn't high on everyone's list. And there is some work that is being done in the region already with the District of Luenenberg has been looking at transit. They've been looking at extending Bridgewater transit out into parts of the municipality and looking at the feasibility of that as well. So Ames is aware of that. They do note with this, of course, there is some challenges, like challenges with every one of them, but it's a multi-year. It, it involves council participation, right? So there's intermunicipal agreements that would have to be reached. And we're already doing some efforts in this area. And then lastly is natural assets and how do we incorporate that into our asset management planning? So this is something that's still a bit under development in terms of developing the standards for how we inventory natural assets and include them in our asset management planning. So an example would be if we had a, a wetland area that functioned as an area that captured storm drainage and filtered it. So that's a natural asset that we've built into our infrastructure to, to help perform a function for us. Or it could be the, a green area along the riverbank. That's natural and it, it's acting as that erosion control piece or sedimentation control piece by holding the bank in place. So those are all assets that municipalities are being encouraged to capture and identify how we maintain those going forward in the future. They, each municipal unit's at a different place in terms of its asset management journey. We're, we're starting ours and through that, we've identified that when you do your kind of risk analysis on what's most important to do, we've landed on linear infrastructure. So understanding our sewer, our water, our roads, our sidewalks and what their condition is and the maintenance and the replacement pieces of those. And natural assets will come along, but we may not necessarily be at the point where we're ready to capture that. Other units maybe. They do note that the challenges right now is that it's, it's a new thing for asset management planning and standards are still being developed and are untested. So we could be capturing things and then standards come out that suggest it be a different way or include different information than we may capture. So we identify that as a risk. In the report, you will note that they recommend Ames that based on the challenges and the scope and the benefits, that we look at advancing either REMO or the natural asset management. During the cohort meeting, it was suggested by staff is that the EV charging network be something that be considered for our region because it is something that's lacking at this point. But again, that was just at the working group level and it was suggested that we needed to come to councils and get agreement. So it's here for you to prioritize your one, your, your second choice, and we'll bring that back to the group.
Just a question, doesn't it make sense to do what our regional partners want to do more than aim? Like appreciate their input, but isn't, would it be more successful if we're doing something together in the region? Yeah. And is that not the other two projects? Like, it sounds like the two they picked are the two that.
Yeah.
Are neighbors that are the ones that they would, anyway. Questions, thoughts? I mean, I'm, I'm supportive of the, of that first recommendation of the EV infrastructure because it is lacking across the region. There's no question there, but I hope. I don't have a second choice really. Council call.
I guess I'd just like to clarify the REMO and natural assets, our partners are not interested, no?
No, not necessarily. It, there wasn't a strong consensus. So for instance, when we had the working, working group meeting, staff from the town and staff from ODL were very interested in the EV charging network, not so much the REMO piece because there are plans and there has been hazard risk vulnerability assessments done. Not that there's no value in what they're proposing, it's just that we've already got some stuff in place and we don't have anything in place for the EV piece. Mahom Bay wasn't that crazy, or at least at the staff level, about the EV charging network. Now, why don't you, they've got some chargers in their town. But there's, there's that debate about whether this is a private industry led initiative as opposed to a government led initiative for the EV charging stations. So there's, there's a little bit of that going on. We just want all on the same page, which is why I'm suggesting you pick our top two so that hopefully one of them kind of is, at least three out of four identified as a priority.
So I, I'd say at this point, I could be convinced otherwise. Somebody has a good argument. But I do like the EV charging stations is a good idea. And the one I'm intrigued by also is natural assets. I, I like that. I like that concept.
Other?
I agree a hundred percent. For me, the public transport doesn't, we have that service. I guess I'm struggling to understand why, why we pursue that at this time.
Yeah.
It's tricky. What is that?
And I mean, the REMO is already in place, so it's kind of pointless to do that if you don't give anybody to do it.
It would, it would build off it, but yes, that's right, we'd be missing Chester.
Right.
Yeah. And Luenenberg wasn't at the meeting, so I'm not too sure where they, they fall with their priority on that.
Pretty automatic, but too much.
So I'm hearing EV infrastructure and natural assets. Is that consensus around the table? Do you need, do you need a motion to direct staff to bring the EV infrastructure and natural, natural assets projects as our first and second choice back to your working group?
Yep.
Do we have a mover for that? Council Durbin, seconded by council Coughlin. All those in favor? Opposed, motions carried, thank you. Exit, this is our new item, 9.8 Exit 12A Interchange Cost Sharing Agreement Amendments. So this was discussed in camera and it's contract negotiations with the province for some tender work being done at Exit 12A. Do you have any additional comment for that?
Note just that we're looking to expand the scope to include some of the construction activity on some of our road reserves and this would, this would enable that to occur.
Okay, so are prepared to make a motion, council panel?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater authorize the execution of the amendments to the cost share agreement between the town of Bridgewater and the Nova Scotia Department of Public Works as reviewed and directed at an in-camera meeting held on May 8th, 2023.
Secondary, council Coughlin. All those in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Down to business, arising unfinished business policy, 57 Low Income Tax Exemption Proposed Amendments. Director Flans will come back.
Good evening again. We, we did look at the low income exemption a year ago and amended it, so I'm recommending additional changes at this time. And so the recommendation is there for what I think it should be. But if you scroll down a little bit further in the report, it compares where the thresholds currently are in the policy and where we propose they go. So one of the items we noticed when we kind of took a deep dive was that in the first three income brackets, so zero to $16,500, 16.5 to $18,000, $18,000 to $20,000, we only had 20% of our applicants, but it was taking up three of our income brackets and exemption amounts. So we're recommending that those be merged into one bracket of 0 to $20,000 and change the exemption amount to $800. So mainly just because we were spending a lot of effort for what was only 20% of the applicants. And then in addition to move the other brackets to a higher exemption and add one additional bracket for people with income from $30,000 to $35,000. And the reason for that is we don't know how many residents exist in that threshold because that's a new threshold for us to examine. When we look at information from the census, we know that there are 235 households with income in that bracket in the town of Bridgewater. We don't know if they may be homeowners or not. So we only have a, a piece of the information. So by giving an exemption of $100, it does allow us to gather that information to see if we're really missing a whole group of people who might be eligible for a tax exemption but for which we don't provide anything at this time. So in addition to that, we looked at what other municipal units were providing for tax exemptions. And for the most part, they seem to be between $18,000 and $30,000 of income threshold, but they just, if you're under that threshold, you just get a set exemption amount for the most part. They don't have a number of thresholds with a number of different exemptions as we do, kind of in comparing with other towns. So, you know, it does appear that we have maybe the most, I guess, complicated, but also it kind of gets down to what people are paying for taxes and try to, try to assist with that. In addition, we have a cap of 50% of your taxes, so the exemption can't offset your entire tax bill, it can only exempt up to half of your taxes. However, there is, the province also provides a seniors rebate, so if they are also a senior receiving the town rebate, they would also be likely eligible for the provincial one as well. So using the information that we have on the applicants from '22, '23 and how much their income was, how much their property tax bill was, and knowing that the cap went up 7.7%, that's what drove us to look at how much the exemption, exemption amount should be. So to try and still keep them, you know, paying around the same amount of taxes overall. And so there is a little bit of juggling in that 0 to 20,000 because people that were in the, the third bracket, their credit, their exemption would have only been $440 last year and they'd be eligible for up to $800 with the proposal. But what I, basically using the information from last year, half of those people that would be eligible for the 800 would max out at half before they hit, use the $800 exemption anyway. But it's just 20% of the applicants, so it didn't make sense to have all these options under that amount. The budget in the past was 40,000, or last year was 40,000, and I did increase it to 65,000 with the intention to deep dive and look at what we were offering for options, knowing that now the tax rates increased as well as a significant number of people were affected by the cap, if not even more than the cap. So, you know, we're, staff are happy to relook at it and, and take any suggestions, but this seemed to kind of keep, I can't provide you with the detail, but I have the, the full detail to look at that seemed to keep people in a, in a pretty good spot compared to what we were assisting with last year. But also looking at that 30 to 35,000 as another group of potential applicants that we're missing.
Any questions here? I like the changes. I think it's, does what council wants to do, which is to make sure that, you know, we're not adding hardship onto those who are most impacted by it. So that, that does that. Did you have a question, council?
Yeah, I just, I, I mean, I like the changes as well, but I'm not sure if that's enough.
Do you have a suggestion?
No, other than if there is a way that we could tie it in with town, our new definition of affordable housing or what the income threshold is. of affordable housing or what the income threshold is. I know it's not a dollar figure. It's more of a percentage of your household income that goes towards living. Yeah, I'm just, if we could kind of, you know, relate it somewhat to this, this formula for affordable housing, I don't know.
So it sounds like something that we'll have to, we can sort of look at.
And it's really directed at homeownership. So the affordable housing is usually income-based and what your rent would be. So it is a bit of a different measure because at this income level, I'm presuming most of the applicants would be senior homeowners with low income, you know, without mortgages kind of situation. But not, you know, not necessarily, but that would be capturing.
It's interesting though. I see what you're saying. Something like, yeah.
Yeah, because the definition of affordable housing is 30% of your household income. So you're gross. And so that, that is being spent on housing. So to Kim's point, you'd have to understand mortgage payments and that's, you know.
It's an interesting conversation for those of us going to the FCM as we talk to, there's expecting 4,000 delegates there, to talk to our colleagues from almost every municipality. What are you doing for, do you have a tax rate, property tax rebate for low-income earners? What is it? How do you, how do you measure it? Things like that. Also, maybe you can do it through handouts or something like that. Just see how our municipal neighbors across the province are doing it. Maybe there is a different way.
If they do have one, for the most part, it's if your income's under eighteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, you get three hundred dollar tax credit, as an example. Like, they're very, very basic. They
Okay. So we're trying to capture more by having different tiers?
Modul has different brackets, but when we look at the comparable towns that we look at, when always we're comparing our tax rates and things, those towns all have very simplistic tax exemption policies where it's usually if your income's under this threshold, then you get a credit. And none of them are as high as eight hundred dollars.
Okay. Well, I certainly appreciate the increase to eight hundred dollars. I like the addition of the new tier to, at least to gather the data and see.
Yeah. The next year I can come back and say, you know, that really should be higher and we know how many applicants we received. So we should encourage people, even if they think it's only a hundred dollars, make sure you apply because it definitely gives us information where council then can consider, you know, changes to the, to the credits again.
Council Thorburn?
Yeah, I kind of like when you've got the three brackets together because those other 10 additional units is really going to gain quite a bit more than the first one. So I think it's more fair to say it helps them more significantly. I like that.
Any other comments? Someone prepared to make a motion? Council Colwell?
Move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the low-income tax exemption policy as presented in document 23-061, as revised policy 57 for the town, effective immediately.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Thorburn. I'm assuming we'll post that on social media and online where people can, yeah, click through. Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? As opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Down to 10.2, Health Services Foundation of South Shore Capital Campaign Appeal for the Brighter Days Campaign. I'm hoping everyone in the community knows that the hospital's undergoing a major expansion, a $140 million expansion, dialysis, MRI, new emergency room layout, ambulance base. I mean, it's incredible. Definitely a once-in-a-lifetime expansion for the hospital. And so in that, a request was made to, to believe all the municipalities, certainly in Linnenberg County, for contributions to the campaign. And following that, we had in our budget, we approved in our budget this year, fifty thousand dollars. But what we, I'm going to say my fault, forgot to do was, our pledge was, we were asked for that amount spread like over five years, fifty thousand dollars a year. So the request is for council to pledge that amount of the total of 200,000 dollars, spread it over those years, or four years. Sorry. What did I say? Five years, four years. All right.
The request was, yeah, 200,000.
Sorry.
And then, I believe it was 40,000 that we had in the budget this year. So we were, we were planning for five years, 40,000 a year. Unless you wanted to condense that.
So am I reading the motion correctly? Are you, not stating?
So you, you could, you could state
Good news, you only have to do it one more time.
You could just state that the commitment is 40,000 dollars a year commencing in '23, '24 for a five-year period for a total of 200,000 dollars?
All right. Someone prepared to make that motion?
Yeah.
Council Colwell. Do we have a secondary? Deputy Mayor Pogier, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? As opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. All right. And sticking with the Health Services Foundation of South Shore, as I noted earlier at discussion session last week, presentation by Nick and Janice regarding some housing for healthcare staff. And at this time, just looking for a letter of support as they seek to move forward with that. So what is the wish of council? Someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I'll make a motion, your worship. I move that council for the Town of Bridgewater provide a letter in support of the Health Services Foundation of the South Shore for inclusion in the foundation's request for the province of Nova Scotia for the donation of a piece of land for development as a temporary housing complex for healthcare professionals.
Seconded by Council Colwell. Any discussion? Question being called. All those in favor? As opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item is application for flag flying, access awareness. So as I noted earlier at the beginning of the meeting, it's access awareness month, week, sorry, May 28th to June 3rd. There'll be a proclamation on the town's website that they are requesting the flag be flown. And so this is, I believe, their first request. Therefore, with our new updated policy, their first request comes to council. And then subsequent requests, they still have to make the request, but it can be approved by the CIO. Someone prepared to make a motion? Council Tanner?
I move, sorry. I move that council for the Town of Bridgewater provide a letter in support of the Health Services Foundation of South Shore for inclusion in the foundation's request to the province of Nova Scotia for the donation of a piece of land for development as a temporary housing complex for healthcare professionals. Sorry.
Flag flying?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry?
Just doing something else on my lookout. I move that council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the application of policy 81, flag flying for the flying of the awareness. Access awareness Nova Scotia flag from May 28th to June 3rd on the town's special purpose flag for shipyards landing.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Thorburn. All those in favor? Thank you. And our last item, it already feels like summer, but it's confirmed when you're, your summer meeting schedule. So council still does meet, just for the general public's information, during the summer, but we do reduce, we just really reduce it by one meeting in July, one meeting in August. So that, that is here and it does need to be approved by council to change our meeting schedule. If something does happen, then except the call of the chair, we could, we could meet if necessary. So this is the way we've been doing it for quite a while. It seems to work. Someone prepared to make that motion? Council Colwell?
I move that council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the proposed summer meeting schedule and hold discussion sessions on July 4th and August 8th, and council meetings on July 10th and August 14th with the normal meeting schedule resuming with the September 5th discussion session.
Seconded by Council Colwell. Any questions? Anyone not want to, all those in favor? As opposed? Motion is carried. We have actually a few in-camera items to deal with after this, under section 22-2A and 22-2E of the Municipal Government Act. A lot of them that. This is my last council meeting with Sandra here because I'm away, going to the FCM early. So this is my last opportunity to, I won't embarrass you. Let's see if you cry first or I cry. But anyway, I just want to say publicly that it has been really an honor and a privilege to work with you. When I was first elected to council in 2004, I sat over there, Sandra was here, and certainly kept me on track and on the straight and narrow, and that hasn't changed. Definitely hasn't changed. I would not have been able to get up and running as mayor anywhere near the, I would argue that perhaps I haven't been fully up and running, but anywhere near the speed I was able to without your help and your guidance and your support and your wisdom. The thing I really love about you is that you will just say it as it is. Those in the office have, see the look on Danny's face. But it's certainly appreciated your honesty and your hard work. And I'm, I'm excited for your retirement. I'm selfishly disappointed because I don't want you to go, but it's just been, it's been a privilege to work with you. So all the best.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Can I now have a motion to adjourn? Please, Council Thorburn, seconded by Council Colwell. We are adjourned.